Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 1st, 2016 meeting of the Scarborough Town Council. And I'm going to call the meeting order, and if everyone will rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilor Rowan.
Here.
Councilor Ketterina.
Here.
Councilor Bayburn.
President.
Councilor Hay.
Here.
Here. We have the baccalaureate for the senior class being held at...
St. Max's.
St. Max's this evening, and so we have Chris Caiozzo has got a senior, Tom Hall has a senior, and Kate Sanclara can also not make it this evening since her regrets. Hopefully, we'll see her at the next meeting. General public comments. Anyone wishing to speak, please approach the podium. End of public comments. Minutes of May 18, 2016, regular meeting, may have a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Second. Any comments or corrections noted? None, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. General public comments. Finished that. Adjustments to the agenda? None. Items to be signed, the treasures warrants, I have already signed them. Old business, none at this time. New business. Order number 16-42. First reading, and schedule a planning board public hearing for an amendment to the Town of Scarborough official zoning map to rezone the parcel located off of Southgate Road identified as map U 37 Lot 3A, as shown on the town assessor's map from the general business district identified as the B 3 district to the industrial district, I district. And before we have public comment, we will hear from Karen Martin to introduce the item. Thank you.
Good evening. Karen Martin with the Scarborough Economic Development Corporation. I'm here to present a potential change to the zoning map. What this change would do is on a lot that's really located right next to a Lear in the industrial park, next to a Lear and across the street really from the Southgate office condominiums, it's been a vacant lot for a while, and now Mr. Ray Labonte would like to come in and build something similar to the Southgate offices, basically a series of five units in a single building that would allow really small manufacturers and other people who need flex space to come in and use these spaces. Now, this type of space has been very popular in the Southgate complex, and he's really bringing that style across the street to this particular lot. The difference here is that this lot is now in B 3, and B 3 really doesn't allow for the really manufacturing uses, and we really feel given the shortage of space that we have in the industrial park and the shortage of industrial space throughout the town, that allowing industrial and small manufacturers to go in this type of space would be a really good service to the community. So again, Mr. Labonte actually is now currently a tenant, or actually, he owns a couple of the spaces over in Southgate. He will be moving once the project is completed, if it's approved. He would be moving over to the new space and still having another three units available for others. It would also free up space at Southgate. So it's the acres, right now, it's vacant, about 1.6 acres, again, sort of sandwiched right in next to a Lear, and you can see the back corner of the property is really where Max's Deli is. You have Fontaine Real Estate, and I believe that's a doctor's office right next to that as well. So that's pretty short and sweet. I will entertain any questions.
Councilor Ketterina.
Karen, would you mind, just for the public, describing what we mean by small manufacturers? I'm sure that is a question people would have.
Sure. It really is those folks who don't fit into the zones because they're actually fabricating product. For instance, there, and there are some people who could fit into other zones, but what they really want is that overhead door, sort of that flexible space. For instance, in Southgate, you have like a biotech firm that's over there. Biocheck is a perfect example of a company that you might want to see in this space. The reason they're not in office is because they like the open space and really the manufacturing character. So again, it's very flexible. You could have landscapers coming in there, construction companies, those types of things, and they really benefit from having the overhead door, small office in the back, and each unit's going to have its own bathroom as well. So it's a really great type of space.
Other questions of Karen? Councilor Rowan.
So I'm understanding correctly that it's going to be moved into an industrial zone?
Correct.
And the industrial zone, right now, it currently borders an industrial zone.
Exactly. It's moving at one lot, right.
Other questions of Karen? Karen, notice to abutters for this proceeding here, the seating?
So we don't normally do notice to abutters here. We would do a public hearing in the planning board, and I may ask Dan for the technical assist. Actually, because it's going from B 3, from a commercial zone to an industrial zone, I'm going to ask you to talk about notice.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the planning board public hearing, there's public notice required to go into in the paper two weeks before, and then a week before the planning board public hearing. Under state law, there is not a requirement for notice to abutters when you're changing a zone from one commercial zone to another commercial zone. There is, like Willowdale, which the council recently considered, when you're changing a commercial zone to a residential zone, or a residential zone to a commercial zone. So under state law, doesn't need to be notice to abutters, but if the council is interesting, interested in having the abutters notified, we certainly can do that for the planning board public hearing. There's not a lot of abutters, so it wouldn't be a difficult process. So we look for your guidance on that. It's really more elective than required at this point.
I think generally speaking, giving people the opportunity to be aware of something that they may have had an expectation.
Sure.
I did notice that the change has a consistency in that the lots that front on US Route 1 are in the B 3 zone, and the lots that directly abut them to the rear, to the east, are in the industrial zone.
Yes.
And this would be consistent and very much like lot number 31 on the plan that you submitted to us.
Sure.
It sits one lot back, so I wanted the public to be aware that there's certainly, it's consistent with the way in which the zoning was originally framed.
Yes, indeed. And I'm happy, I was going to say, I'm happy to reach out to the other commercial owners along the Route 1.
I think that would be a good idea. I would like, I think the council would appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you. Let's have public comment. Anyone wishing to address this matter, please approach the podium. See none. Entertain a motion.
With approval of order number 16-042.
Second.
Good discussion. This is a first reading, so I think we, generally speaking, are looking more for insight information, a little bit of education ourselves, and we'll now send this off to the planning board, where we expect it'll get a closer view, and then back for a second reading before us. So seeing no further comment, all in favor?
Peter.
Sorry, just one additional...
Yes, go ahead.
Did I understand we did ask for that sort of public notice as part of this process?
We will...
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Order number 16-43, first reading, and schedule a planning board public hearing for amendments to the Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance regarding multifamily housing allowances and standards in the town's residential districts. Before we take public comment on this, we'll ask the town planner, Dan Bacon, to give us an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan Bacon, planning director for the Town of Scarborough. This is a proposed amendment that actually first went to the Long Range Planning Committee, and is discussed at that level, and is recommended to you from the Long Range Planning Committee, and it's really to allow for and regulate multifamily housing in our village residential districts. So that's the Village Residential 2, Village Residential 4, and the traditional neighborhood development zones. They're essentially the residential areas around Dunston and Oak Hill. And it's to regulate multifamily housing by building size. And this is very similar to what the council and Long Range Planning Committee considered earlier this year. That consideration was in the TVC district, our mixed-use zone, where the council approved allowing multifamily housing up to 10,000 square feet of building footprint, so regulating on building size rather than number of units. So this is a similar proposal for these village zones, where the Long Range Planning Committee's recommending that a consideration be given to allow multifamily housing to not just be regulated by number of units, which in the residential zones currently is eight, but instead, or in addition, to allow them to be regulated by building footprint height setbacks. And the proposal here is that in these areas, 7,500 square feet of building footprint is recommended, and is proposed in the zoning amendment. And as a reference point, if you've been through, say, the Dunston Crossing project or Eastern Village project in Dunston Crossing, there are two townhouses that exist when you come into the project. Those are 10,000 square feet, so that's bigger than what we're talking about with this multifamily housing allowance. Those are townhouses, and that's, those are allowed to be constructed by number of units. This is proposed to be smaller buildings of 7,500 square feet of footprint or less, to really allow for more flexibility in terms of the type of units that go in these buildings. Right now, the market, the housing market is suggesting that studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms are in demand in Scarborough and in the region. So this would allow for, instead of, say, eight units in a building, maybe 10 or 12 units in a building, but the building still needs to, again, be in scale with the residential setting. So as a reference point, and I provided this in the cover, in the cover letter, Camperdown Elm project, which is on Black Point Road, it's right down the road from Oak Hill here, has four or five buildings in that project, and the two bigger buildings are pretty much exactly 7,500 square feet. And right now, those have eight units in them. That's the max that was allowed at the time. So in terms of a matter of scale, that's a good project to look at, to say, what is 7,500 square feet? That would give you an example. And what this amendment would do is, say, instead of eight units, that might be two or three bedroom units, a project could be developed like that, and maybe there are, you know, 10 or 12 one-bedroom units in a building that size. So that's really the intent around the change. It's not to allow more housing density or larger buildings, but rather more kind of flexibility around the number of, and type of units that can be in a building. So with that introduction, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Dan. Councilor Ketterina.
Dan, could you just talk for the public about parking? Because I know I've heard since we've discussed this in Long Range Planning...
Yeah.
...concerns from some people in the public about, well, if you're going to allow more units within these buildings, there's going to be more traffic, there's going to be more parking, and could you just address how we looked at that?
Sure. In terms of parking, the town treats one-bedroom dwelling units different in terms of parking than two or more bedroom units, where under our zoning ordinance and through site plan review, the planning board would look at these. One-bedroom units are required one and a half parking spaces, so if there's an odd number, they have to round up. But when you have two or more bedrooms, there's two parking spaces required. So that's how the number of parking spaces would be calculated, and we think that that's the proper number for a suburban community like Scarborough, given that in some cases there are going to be one occupant, other cases there'll be two in a one-bedroom. And in terms of traffic impacts and those implications, I can provide it again to you at your public hearing or second reading, but I provide back for the TVC district kind of a breakdown of what are the differences in traffic generation and traffic impacts, and essentially what that, those statistics, which are both from Maine and sort of nationally, indicate is that one-bedroom units essentially have half the traffic impact as two, three, four-bedroom units. So if you're doing, say, more one-bedroom units, it's really going to be sort of a wash in comparison to, you know, having fewer, larger units with more bedrooms, so...
Can I just do a quick follow-up? I think it, personally, I'm on Long Range Planning, so we worked on this as a committee, and I'm all for more affordable housing we can get in this town, and particularly rental units is great. My last, my only other question for people, again, who may not understand, is what you mean by multiplex?
Yeah. Multiplex, well, there's, the town has a variety of different kind of categories of housing, and there's multifamily housing, which we're talking about, where it's three or more units in a building, in one building, and we're talking about allowing multifamily housing to not have a cap on the number of units in the building so long as they meet this footprint limitation and height and other setbacks. We also have a category called multiplex, and that's sort of the historical allowance for kind of condo-type units or other types of multifamily units, and that's three to eight units per building. And so I mentioned Camperdown Elm earlier. That's an example of a multiplex project, where there's some buildings that have six units, some have eight, and there's a variety of other neighborhoods like that. A lot of them are on Eastern Road. There's Whistler's Landing and Cedar Point and Teal Point. There's some others in town. So those are multiplex. Often, they're arranged kind of horizontally. And then we have townhouses, which you mentioned earlier. Dunston Crossing has some townhouses, Eastern Village has townhouses, and those are units that have common walls, and are vertical units that are in a row. So I hope that helps kind of clarify the different types of units we have.
Councilor Rowan. So just to follow up on that. So the multiplex, the limit still applies, we're only talking about now multifamily?
Correct.
Gotcha. So the VR 2, VR 4, and TND, you said were only in Dunston and Oak Hill?
Correct.
Gotcha. So everywhere, there would be sewer and water?
Right. They're all served by public utilities, water and sewer.
That's in the one final. And then, if I recall, when we had the discussion about the Town and Village Center Zone...
Yeah.
...that kind of footprint size was already in place?
It was.
Okay. So this is just, again, to kind of fit in with the scale of the neighborhood, is where we got the 7,500, because we're adding that at this point?
Right. And the TVC commercial buildings were limited to 10,000 square foot building footprint, so the decision was to have multifamily duplicate that at 10,000 square feet. In our residential zones, we don't have an overall building footprint limit. So the Long Range Planning Committee looked at sort of the variety of development that's in these areas, and felt that the townhouses were okay, but were maybe a little bit bigger than what we perhaps should be allowing for multifamily housing that's not limiting the number of units. So they were, I'd say, conservative in that regard, and notched it down to something less than 7,500 square feet.
Thank you.
Councilor Bayburn.
Thanks. Couple of questions. First is, does this impact at all any of the permitting process than the current projections that we've had, or the number of permits that we currently allow? Does this run into any conflict so that, you know, this might open up a Pandora's box where all of a sudden we have the wrong number of permits available for this type of development?
Under the growth management ordinance?
Right.
It should not. There's single-family category, and then there's the multifamily category, so this should still be in keeping with those categories, and shouldn't, say, create a proliferation of multifamily housing.
Although I wouldn't mind if the Long Range Planning Committee or Comprehensive Plan looks at those permits, and whether those numbers are still accurate...
Yep.
...and reflects another value. Just to, because I've been in one and not the other, so Camperdown, that's the green ones that are on the hill right before the Eastern Trail, right? The Eastern Road?
Right.
Are they the same, so on Poland Farms Road, it's called Clearview, I actually lived in one of those. Is that a multiplex, or is that considered multifamily? There's like eight units in one building?
Those are multiplex as well.
Okay. Now, I just want, yeah, I just needed to get a visual. Sorry. Thanks.
Anything? Can you give us a little bit on Sean's question about growth ordinance, so that you give a little context for the benefit of the public?
Sure. The town has in place, and has for a number of years, I think maybe 12 or 14 years now, a growth cap or a building permit limitation. Every year, the town can only issue a certain number of residential building permits, and that number is at about 135 residential building permits per year, and that was put in place back in the early 2000s range, in reaction to a high volume of residential development that was occurring in the late 90s and early 2000s, when the town was seeing 200, 300 new residential units a year, and was putting a strain on municipal services, the schools, et cetera. As of the last six or seven years, with the recession and with a slower pace of residential development, we haven't been getting close to that limitation. We were getting closer and bumping up into that limitation until about 2007, 2008. So the last six or eight years, we haven't. We have been seeing an uptick in residential growth and permits, where I think now in the, you know, 80 to 95 permits a year the last couple of years, ballpark. So there's still, I think, still value in having a growth limitation to pace the town's growth so that services and the schools kind of keep up year to year. But that's essentially why it's in place and what it does, and individual developments are only allocated a certain number a year, so a big project can't take all the residential building permits from everyone else in a given year. So there's some checks and balances in it in that regard, to ensure that developments build out more slowly and aren't taking all the permits and monopolizing that.
How does it split between a single-family residential and multifamily?
There's a different treatment of multifamily, where they're allowed more permits because by their nature, they're in, you know, you need to get eight permits all at once, or 10 permits all at once because you need to build a building at once. So there's allowances for that, and there's sort of a carve-out for multifamily for that reason. There's also a carve-out for elderly-type development, because it doesn't have the same demands, at least on the schools, and there's additional allowances for affordable housing. So like the Habitat Project takes permits from a separate pot, because that's being encouraged through the Housing Alliance, through the council over the years, in terms of, you know, the type of housing you want to see in some regards. So affordable housing doesn't compete necessarily with market-rate housing.
Good. Thank you. Councilor Bayburn. Ketterina?
Bayburn, did you hear that? Quick question on impact fees. Do we still have them, and how much are they, and what sort of construction?
Sure.
So that's sort of a, but I know that'll come, I know some people will be thinking that.
Yeah, it's all related...
Right.
...to the, also to the building permit limitation, so thanks for mentioning that. There, we, town has, since I think the similar timeframe, late 90s, early 2000s, has school impact fees that are assessed at the building permit time for residential construction. The fee's around $4,000, maybe $4,200 for single-family homes, and that is based on the analysis done of the number of school kids. That typically is generated out of single-family housing, and it is less, is, I think, in the $2,000, $2,500 range for two-family dwellings, based, again, on analysis around the average population of kids in that type of housing. And then multifamily, the fee is less than that. I think it's in the $1,800 range. And I'm, didn't come exactly prepared, so I can provide you all the specifics, but it's in that range for multifamily housing, again, based on analysis around the amount of occupancy of school-age kids in that type of housing. So it's tiered based on, based on that analysis.
Is it 1,800 per unit?
Yeah.
In the multifamily, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's my question.
Right. It's not per building, it's per dwelling unit.
Any other questions of Dan Bacon? Thank you, Dan.
Welcome.
Public comment? Anyone wishing to comment on this? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and entertain a motion.
With approval of order number 16-43.
Second.
Discussion. Councilor Bayburn.
So I'm going to really share probably the same reservations I shared on the original amendments, because I, first, I do appreciate the planning board's recommendations and their review process, because I know that they're going to be extremely thorough in that. The two things that I hope that they address, one is, they may or may not be able to as part of this, I want to make sure that as we continue to accept amendments to the changes, that we're not eroding what is already in the Comprehensive Plan until the new Comprehensive Plan has been developed, primarily because there is one particular community, which is the Dunston area, that forced a voter referendum, that asked us to limit the amount of growth that was happening, and so I want to make sure that stays intact, at least until the next Comprehensive Plan process goes through its full cycle, and that we just don't simply erode that by these type of amendments, and then just accept them as part of the Comprehensive Plan. And the second part of this is that I hope that this actually allows us to look at the broader perspective of residential planning, because it seems like, while I know that it's highly desirable, because I live in the Oak Hill area, growth in Scarborough really needs to be pushed out, and I hope that, while this is necessary to meet the current needs, I hope that we look at the bigger issue about where other residential, this type of residential housing might be in North or West Scarborough, and not just simply in Oak Hill or Dunston.
Other comments? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Unanimous. No non-action items standing in special committee reports. Sean Roden, we start down with you.
I'm all set for this evening. Thank you.
Peter?
Actually, I am also.
Very good. Councilor Ketterina.
The only thing I'm going to bring up is the Vision Committee had our meeting on June 20, excuse me, May 23rd, I don't know what day it is anymore, and that was great. We, all of the members of boards and committees and whatever got together and had great presentations on what's going on in the community, and that's it for me.
Councilor Rowan.
Yep. So the Housing Alliance met. We had a very productive meeting. We had a quorum for the first time.
Hey.
So we actually got a lot done. We elected new officers, and one of the longstanding action items we advanced, we're not quite there yet, but is to provide some of the developers that have chosen, elected to take an affordable housing density bonus, to provide them some guidance in terms of what that means, and so we're making progress on that. And that Sedco also met. We had a very productive discussion. Mr. Bacon gave another presentation of complete streets, and we got into a discussion about the Haggis Parkway, and it led to a realization that we need a larger discussion about it. So there's a joint meeting of Long Range... So there's a joint meeting of Long Range Planning and SEDCO coming up in, at the end of June, where we'll get to discuss some of the details. That's all I have.
Thank you. Town manager report. Tom Hall is absent today, so we'll pass over that. And Sean, why don't we start with Counselor Cummins?
I'm all set. Thank you. Congratulations to the graduating class.
Cheers.
Same thing. Congratulations, and the vote's coming up. So everybody comes out to the polls and lets us know what they're thinking. Thank you.
Counselor Ketterina.
Again, congratulations to those graduating on Class of 2016. And please remember to vote. You can get your absentee ballots until June 9th. And after that, you have to have a special reason for not voting on the 4th.
That's right.
But there's no excuses for not voting, so please vote.
Counselor Rowan.
So I'm going to echo the same comments. Please vote, and congratulations to the graduating seniors.
Thank you. Monday was Memorial Day, as you're all probably aware. I think we all have parents or grandparents who endured World War II and think of them fondly, having, most of them having passed at this point. I read a book recently that, it was a great, great read, called Boys in the Boat. It's a story about a group of kids from the Great Northwest who went to the University of Washington and participated in their rowing team, their eight-oar rowing team. And they made it to the 1936 Olympics, where Jesse Owens made that Olympics famous. It was the Berlin Olympics. It was the beginning of the rise of Hitler in Europe and the terrible time that resulted from that. And the author reflected at the end of the book, he went and visited the place where Hitler stood to watch. It was the oar house where the boats were stored, where the boats all passed at the finish line. And at the end of the book, he was sort of reflecting on what this meant to him, to go to that spot. And I just, it's just a paragraph, and I'm going to read it, because it, it says, "Much about our parents and grandparents. Standing there, it occurred to me that when Hitler watched Joe and the boys fight their way back from the rear of the field to sweep ahead of Italy and Germany 75 years ago, he saw but did not recognize heralds of his doom. He could not have known that one day hundreds of thousands of boys, just like them, boys who shared their essential natures, decent and unassuming, not privileged or favored by anything in particular, just loyal, committed, and perseverant, would return to Germany dressed in olive drab, hunting him down. They are almost all gone now, the legions of young men who saved the world in the years just before I was born. But that afternoon, standing on the balcony of House West, I was swept with gratitude for their goodness and their grace, their humility and their honor, their simple civility and all the things that they taught us before they flitted across the evening water and finally vanished into the night." Entertain the motion to adjourn.
Put you adjourn.
Second.
Good evening, everyone.